Good afternoon. I call to order the special meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners for Friday, November 20th of 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Mr. Redrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Weiss?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here. We're here for the purpose to discuss a health order, an impending health order that's coming down and with regards to restrictions and so forth. At this time, I will call on our county administrator, Philip Smith Haynes, to discuss this with us.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we start, I need to recuse myself from this discussion and possible vote due to a perceived conflict of interest on the issue, specifically because of any discussions on the health mandate as it pertains to limitations on restaurants and bars. My hope was to be part of this conversation as it has a huge impact on the health and safety of our citizens, but I do not want any of my questions of staff or conversations with my fellow commissioners to seem that I'm promoting or protecting my business or trade. This will be my first recusal in 14 years of being on the city and county commissions. I know I was elected to make tough decisions and I haven't shied away from any in the past, but I'm confident the four of you with citizen input will make the proper decision. As part of this recusal, per state statute, I have to leave the room. That pains me as I love the democratic process and normally would very much look forward to the many comments from the audience and discussions of the commissioners. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you. So I will turn it back to Mr. Philip Smith Haynes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. So as you noted, Mr. Chair, what we are here today to discuss is a proposed health order from our local health officer. That is not me. That is Mr. Jason Tiller, who is available on the telephone, but because Mr. Tiller does not have current access to a computer, I'm pinch hitting a little bit for him this afternoon. This is a little bit of an odd process that we find ourselves in this afternoon. So I wanted to take a moment to talk about what this is not today. The discussion today is not about a mask mandate. Saline County has an existing resolution regarding masks. The commission has asked for that to come back for discussion next Tuesday at your regular meeting, and that will be on the agenda at that time. But this order today does not deal specifically with the mask mandate. This is not about schools. Mr. Tiller cooperates very closely with our educational institutions, both the K through 12 institutions and our institutions of higher education. They are in consultation frequently and they are doing a fine job as far as they are able. This is not an attempt to shut down business in this community. In fact, this is an attempt to keep businesses open. I know that there are many in the business community who are concerned about the shutdown order that was implemented throughout the state of Kansas back at the end of March, and concerned that some businesses, they felt were able to stay open while others were not, and I understand those concerns. Those categories of what was considered essential were handed down to us by the state of Kansas. They were not developed here locally, and the order that's before the commission this afternoon is an attempt to keep as many businesses open and operating in this community as possible. This order is not perfect. If we had had more time before we were able to come to you, we would have had more stakeholder conversations with businesses, with the Health Department Advisory Committee, with other county staff. That just simply hasn't occurred as we've tried to get this out to the community in a 48-hour period. And finally, this is not a legislative act in the sense that normally comes before the county commission. You are not, this afternoon, being asked to take proactive steps to adopt a resolution. What you have before you this afternoon is a health order issued by Mr. Tiller that you would not, if it were TB or any other disease, even come before you, but due to the circumstances surrounding COVID-19, at the special legislative session of the Kansas Legislature earlier this summer, they adopted House Bill Number 2016, which amends the legislation regarding health orders so that the Board of County Commissioners may review, amend, or revoke an order concerning COVID-19. So that is what brings us here today. I'd be happy to answer questions about the proposed health order. I'll just go through some of the highlights, and then I know Mr. Tiller will be happy to answer questions about the health impacts as well. What the proposed order requires is that folks have no more than 15 individuals gathered within one indoor space. And an indoor space is defined as basically an individual room, office, or hallway, other enclosed space. There are some exceptions to that term, but that is the basic requirement imposed in this health order. Everything else is essentially an exception to that basic rule of having no more than 15 individuals gathered. So the first exception concerns folks outdoors in a park, stadium, or open-air entertainment venue who are able to maintain social distancing and wear face coverings if they're not actively participating in a sporting event. The second exception is for retail establishments. A retail establishment may have more than 15 individuals present within a single outdoor space, but they need to provide for adequate social distancing to the extent possible and to enforce provisions of local ordinances or resolutions relating to face coverings. The next exception is for bars, restaurants, or congregate eating spaces. They may have more than 15 individuals present within a single indoor space, provided that no party in excess of eight individuals be seated together and that there's six feet or a barrier between tables or booths. Additionally, we're requesting that such establishments be open to the public only between 5:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. The next exception is for commercial gyms or fitness centers. They may have more than 15 individuals present, provided that they limit their capacity to 50% of the fire code and that they frequently clean common touchpoints. The next exception is for personal service and medical facilities. They may have more than 15 folks in a single indoor space, but we ask that they try to limit the number of people in any common waiting room to 15 folks and to see clients by appointment. The next exception is one that was added early this morning and was not on the draft that was sent out yesterday. It was added this morning in response to a comment from the public, and that is for auditorium, exhibit hall, event space, or theater. They may have more than 15 individuals present within a single indoor space, provided that they are limited to 25% of the fire code and that they require folks to wear a face covering. And then there are some other, just sort of blanket exemptions, that they may have more than 15 individuals, but they should attempt to provide social distancing and encourage face coverings. Those include religious institutions, airports, election polling places, licensed childcare facilities, schools, and activities within the purview of a school's governing body, and court facilities. I know there have been some additional things that have come up that we didn't think about when this was being drafted, one of which is related to funeral homes and whether those should be treated similarly to religious institutions. So I think there'll be an opportunity to have some discussion about that and whether there are others as well. As I said, this is not perfect by any means. The other document that was provided to the commission and to the public was just a memo. The commissioners on Tuesday had asked for some questions about what other folks are doing, and so I've attempted to provide some information to that effect. So with that, I will stop talking, and you can ask questions of myself or Mr. Tiller.
Okay, I'll start with Commissioner White, if you have any questions or comments.
Not this time.
Mr. Weiss?
No, not till after we visit with Jason some.
Well, then let's stop and visit with Jason. Jason, are you on the phone?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes. Do you have comments or...
Just to say at this point that, you know, having to take additional measures was something I think that we had hoped to be able to avoid, but the nature of the spread of COVID and the quick rise of COVID and the impact it had on our hospital has precipitated taking additional action. And like Phil said, this is very kind of short, put together. Tried to work with him through email on it, and if you have specific questions that I can try and answer, I would be happy to try and answer those.
Well, I think what I'll do is back up a little bit here then. I wanted to discuss this among the commission, but it appears that that's not going to work in the way that I anticipated. So I'm going to open this up to the public for comments, and perhaps there will be questions of you at that point, and will further facilitate our ability to make a decision on whether we accept this health order or amend it or reject it. I want to tell the public that we will allow you three minutes to speak on this item and this item only. It's not about any other county business you have a concern about, but we will allow you to speak on this issue, and we do ask that you wear a face mask to the podium, please. So if anyone wishes to address or question what's going on here, you will need to give us your name and address, please.
I need to remove my mask because it's muffling my voice.
No, sir. You'll have to put your mask on or we won't let you speak. I'm sorry.
You do know that it's muffling my voice now. I was to the...
I can hear you clearly.
Oh, okay, and it's not his fault back there. It's the mask, okay? I'm here to say there is not imminent danger. What you have experienced is a manipulation of data points. If you are scared of this, this is the latest right here. If you are scared of that, you don't have a reason. You don't know what this stuff means. This is data points all put together, and you can arrange it any way you want. And right here, it's black and white, but I could have for another dollar made it red, and that would scare anybody. There is not imminent danger. I'll refer to this article. The new data from the CDC, 6% of deaths are due to COVID-19 alone. Are you familiar with any of that discussion? So what I'm saying is that what is the death rate or percent is what I'm talking about? And by my projections, and there's, anybody can make a projection. You use the numbers any way you want.
Well, sir, I'm going to stop you because we need to talk about what this health order is. That's what we're here today to discuss is the health order.
Okay, well, then I'll confine my... To the health order.
And would you also please state your name and address for the record?
Dennis Benoit. I live in Geneseal.
Thank you.
And, but this is my hometown. I was born here. Okay. Do you have an exception in there for a healthy person? Because what I don't want, that has issues, but what I don't want is a dictator telling me that I am a healthy person and I have to wear a mask up here in front of you. You have been elected by the bosses there, and you are public servants. That's, we have given you the authority to do our daily deeds, and I like to be the first one to say there's not a rush on anything. Have you talked to anybody in the restaurant business? Okay, well, then, what did they say? They would probably like some common sense to prevail in here. No bum rush to speak of, so. Is that it?
All right. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. And I'm sure there's someone else who wishes to speak.
Dalton McDowell, Salina. We do have to do something. I've listened to the video from Salina Regional's Director, Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Rob Freelove. They're at capacity because they don't have enough staff, but going around shutting down businesses, what we're going to have is a map, what we're going to have on the business side of everything is businesses cannot keep trying to support themselves. This year is shot. They had February and, or January and February, and then they're trying to make up for the loss when they had to shut down for that time they had to. And another thing, how, why is it so difficult to get the, to get what Saline County's chief medical expert, Jason, how difficult is it to, for the public to get what his certifications are? Because I looked on, when you guys hire for that position, they don't have to have nothing in the medical field to be hired. They can be, they can have administration, finance, business. They don't have to have nothing in the medical field. Not saying Jason doesn't know what he's talking about, but I think it's time that the Saline County and the city of Salina bring in experts from Salina Regional Health, the KU School of Medicine, KDHE, and quit trying to be doctors when you guys aren't.
We have two of those people on the staff of that unit there as it is, so thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandy Welsh, and I'm from Salina, and I guess I had some quick questions either for this gentleman or Mr. Tiller that's on the phone. And again, I'm trying to figure, when a gym can have 50% of fire occupancy, but an auditorium can only have 25, I'm just trying to figure out what's the rationale or what was the basis by that? I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but it, I mean, I could add one and one and it equals two, and it, I don't understand that. The other thing is, when you say 15 people in a room, is this a room or is a closet a room? I mean, what does that mean by room if I can have individuals in the room? I just think there should be a little better clarification on what does the room mean? And then the last thing I have is, I mean, I have family that have retail, and they have struggled, just like this young man mentioned. They have struggled this year, I mean, trying to save that business, and they have November and December to try to make up for some of that. So I appreciate the exception for the retail, and we'll do our best to social distance and wear a mask. But the last one is the bars. I mean, does something magically happen at 11:01 with COVID that says you have to close down at 11? I mean, again, I mean, this is serious stuff to us out here, and I mean, I hate it that this young man had to leave. I mean, he's got the expertise behind some of it, and we're not even allowed to hear what that means to somebody that's in that business. But those were my concerns about making this, you know, thoughts about what to do with some of these businesses and making it common sense for them. Thank you for your time.
All right. Did you, do you have an answer, Phil, for her on the 25% or 50% or whatever? Okay. Go ahead.
So Jason can probably speak to this a little bit better than I can. There's not a concrete level, right? So we know that the disease spreads more readily indoors, and we know that when you are eating or drinking, you can't do that through a mask, so you are increasing the risk of spread by participating in indoor eating or drinking, and also indoor activities such as, you know, working out at a gym. The level to which that increases risk is something that I think is not scientifically determinable to a great extent at this point in the, in the disease history. So what we have done is we've looked to other jurisdictions around the state. There is nothing magical that happens at 11:01. Some other jurisdictions have said midnight or 12:30, but the attempt is to limit the exposure of people to that high-risk activity of eating or drinking in an indoor space without shutting them down. You know, there are, there are some states that have just gone back to stopping indoor dining, and we don't think that's a good thing for the business community in Saline County, don't want to go there. And so what is a reasonable attempt to limit the spread but still keep the businesses open? 11 o'clock may not be the right time. Maybe it's, maybe it's midnight, maybe it's 10, maybe that restriction comes out. But that's, that's, again, based on what we see other folks around the state doing.
Okay. Thank you. Jason, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I think Phil did a pretty good job explaining it. The only thing I would add probably is that when you think about capacity of restaurants
of restaurants and places like that at 50% versus 25% in larger venues, I think you also, you know, you have to consider how many people can generally be in one of those areas. You know, 25% of a place that could hold 50 or, you know, a thousand people versus, if we said 25% of a restaurant, then it can only hold 100, has greater impact to the smaller business. So I think it, trying to find that happy medium in between for that compromise.
All right. Thank you. So.
Thank you, Commissioners. I am Bob Kraft. I'm a Salina resident. I live at 305 South Estates Drive. I'm a family physician and I'm the CEO and Chief Medical Officer of Salina Family Healthcare Center. I'm also the father to two children who go to our public schools and see the negative consequences that the current outbreak has on our children. At Salina Family Healthcare, we have directly seen the increase in COVID cases with requests for COVID evaluation increasing by 100% in recent weeks and our positivity rate increasing from 5 to 10% to over 35% in recent weeks as well. This places tremendous stress on the outpatient healthcare system, affecting all of our patients' ability to access the usual care that they need, including life-saving preventative and chronic care. We have also received communication from Salina Regional Health Center outlining measures that they are taking because of a similar mismatch between the demand for the healthcare services and the supply of healthcare professionals. So clearly, this is something that action needs to be taken on. Several weeks ago, I visited a local pharmacy chain and noted that no one in the establishment was wearing a mask except for me. And that included three customers, the clerk and a pharmacist who walked in to start their shift. I also hear stories of bars that are packed with people who do not have masks on. These are all choices that we are making as a society to choose and prioritize other activities over our children's future. The public health order that has been presented, I think, would be a good step forward. It does sound a little bit complicated and we're trying to make compromises. And so what I recommend and what I urge is that you take actions at the county level to close temporarily non-healthcare establishments where masking cannot be reasonably expected and enforced for the clientele's entire stay. This would essentially temporarily close, and again, I say temporarily, in-person serving at bars and restaurants and would prohibit the in-person serving of food or drink at other establishments. Carryout service could and should continue at maximum capacity. All other establishments, in my view, should remain open. But the current mask ordinance should be strictly enforced and additional measures holding establishments responsible for repeated failure to enforce the masking mandate in their establishment should be enacted and enforced up to and including closure of the most egregious offenders. I urge a county level public health warning also, directing the public to avoid private gatherings outside of business-related activities with non-household family members. It's the mixing of non, of non-nuclear family members where the spread seems to be happening. On the opposite side, I urge the Health Department and local schools to develop criteria to reopen schools more fully, but only with activities that can be done while masked.
Okay, Doctor, I'm sorry, but your time is up. If you want to wrap it up there for me?
Sure.
Please?
I also urge the county and everyone here to urge our state and national leaders to pass another COVID emergency relief package to help the people who we have to close. So the bars and the eating establishments. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Spicer, 2515 Argon Drive. And I'm also the Executive Director of Salina Community Theater. Last spring and summer, when Governor Kelly put out her first recommendations through, I was able to contact her office through Senator Hardy to talk about some of the exceptions. And what I was told by the governor's office at that point was trying to cover every possible exception is truly impossible. They can't think of everything and every percentage and every number. The only thing I would like to say today is that we have been open since July, successfully doing five productions and over 40 performances. We have taken extraordinary cleaning measures. We take temperatures of everybody, every volunteer coming in, every student coming in. Everything that goes onstage and offstage is sanitized every time it's used. The auditorium is sanitized after each use. So we have taken these measures and we've taken them very seriously. Our backstage crews, our actors onstage and our audiences are required to be masked or we ask them to come back when masks aren't required. So we take this masking very, very seriously. The only thing we have discovered since that time is that 25% probably isn't quite enough for us to even break even. If you could reconsider that portion of the restriction to be more 33%, that would bring us to about 100 seats. And in our house, if you've been in the community theater, you know that seating about a third of a house, we can more than spread people out six feet apart. We also tell people when they make reservations online that we reserve the, the privilege to adjust your reservations so that you are six feet away from somebody else. So if you move forward with this resolution, I would please ask that you make that for at least the theaters and auditoriums 33% as opposed to 25%. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Mary Landis. I'm Executive Director of the Temple. I live at 656 Georgetown Court. I just wanted to speak on behalf of a wedding venue. We have had 14 weddings this year since August 1st, ranging from anywhere from 400 people down to about 25 people. Our challenge is, if this goes through, which I am actually in support of this, it's going to be a great sacrifice for us. We're a startup. We're desperately trying to save the temple. But we, when we stand to lose about $6,000 for two weddings and a Christmas party if this goes through. But these weddings are extremely difficult for us to get people to follow the masks. We have them sign a waiver. They promise to wear the masks. And then as soon as they come in and sit down, they take the masks off. So it's been a real challenge for us. I've attended every one of those, working the bar. And just, we have volunteers and it's a tremendous risk to all of us. We've been holding our breath, hoping that no one gets sick from this. No one's grandmother gets sick. And so it's, it's a sacrifice. It's very difficult. But I think the way this is written, it makes sense to me to maybe step back for a bit until we can see if the vaccine is going to help protect folks. Or at the very minimum, just limit the number of people that are allowed to come to the weddings. Because they tend to know each other. They take the masks off. They're comfortable with each other. And it's been very difficult to watch that.
All righty. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak before I bring it back to the Commission?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Philip and I live in Salina. Me and my wife have been living in Salina for a long time. We are actually expecting a new member of the family next year. And I just wanted to say a few things here. I wanted to thank the Essential Food Service, Delivery Education and Medicine workers. Without their sacrifice, we would be in an even worse situation than we are now. I'd like to thank you Commissioners, Health Department employees and other city and county staff for their hard work. So, let me see here. Like many of the people in this room, I've seen what this disease can do to a person. Some do okay and for others, it's frankly a death sentence. It's time we start taking this thing seriously, listening to our health experts and stop believing every meme we see on Facebook. I'm not here to blame anyone in this room. If we're going to cast blame, we need to focus our efforts casting it in the right direction. The hands we've been dealt by state and federal bodies have not been ideal, to say the least. However, we can't sit around feeling sorry for ourselves and waiting for a magic solution. If we want to get out of this mess, we as a community need to take serious and consequential action sooner rather than later. Imagine with me for a second, if we were all more responsible and took these more extreme measures last March and April. Sure, it would be a few painful weeks, but I imagine by this month, we'd all be back to work. Kids would be back to school all face to face and we could travel to visit our friends and loved ones for the holidays. Unfortunately, hindsight is 20/20 and the reality is that conditions we face today are even worse than in March. So all things considered, we have two options. Continue as we are or make serious consequential changes and adopt the state's new mandates or make more strict mandates. These study, there are studies that show reinfection of the virus is possible, although rare, and studies that describe long-term health problems of getting the disease. This cycle is unsustainable. If we continue with how things are now, I can guarantee you, I'll continue to walk through the grocery store and see several people without masks on. We need to stand up to the anti-mask bullies and large corporations putting innocent people at risk. Partisan loyalty should not be more important than protecting our fellow community members. More half-baked measures will mean more half-baked results. A stronger mask mandate now and we will reap the benefits. So I'd like to thank you for listening and I hope no matter what decision you make today, you consider what I've said and the rest of us have said and continue to listen to all members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, excuse me. I'm Sharon Calabrese and I do not have my thoughts organized right now at all. So I'm just kind of speaking off the cuff. I think it's disgusting what we're doing to our children in this community, all because of this 99% survival rate disease, okay? I am livid that you guys, you see the studies. You're always talking about the studies and gotta listen to the health professionals. Well, there's a lot of health professionals that have absolutely 180% opposite direction of what a lot of y'all think. Okay, and they're just as qualified as you are. Where's, these numbers, you couldn't trust them any further than, you know, they even admit, you have so many false positives and false negatives or whatever. It's just a mess. But we're shutting our kids down and there's no reason to be doing this to these kids. If the teachers are, we know who this affects. We know it's the people with two or three other health conditions, you know, lungs, heart, diabetes. We understand that and we don't want no one to die. But my God, these people, they're the percentage that could be affected by this disease more than just a seasonal flu, which I understand is a little more than seasonal flu. Still 99%, you know, survival rate. Why are we shutting our community down for this? What would, what's going to happen if we really have something serious come through? I mean, really serious. This is, and I, I'm not saying I'm not taking it seriously, but I'm just saying, look at all the destruction and devastation you're doing to everybody else in this community. You know, and the common good? Is that what it's for, the common good? Well, what's common good about these kids failing miserably at school? I'm glad they're back five days a week now, but there's no reason why they should not be back in school five days a week, all day long and getting a decent education. We have the finest schools that money can buy. And we've got teachers here that are more than willing and thankfully wonderful teachers. But we got some that, don't you dare put us back at full capacity.
I think you need to take those thoughts to the school board.
Well, no, you know what? It's a community thing. It's a community thing. They get their directions from Jason Tiller. They, it's a whole group thing. It's Laura Kelly. It's everybody. They have to work together. It's a community. But let's stop just taking this as it has to be done because it does not have to be done. These companies, these stores, these companies, people that put their life savings into, work all their lives, work sunup, sundown, a lot of times don't take a paycheck home because they couldn't make ends meet. And you're telling them to shut their doors so that they can only operate 50%?
I'll have to ask you to wrap it up.
And you operate or give up everything you own. Because that's what these companies, these people that own these companies are going through.
Okay, your three minutes are passed up, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon. Jeff Bennett from.
It's my understanding, Jeff, that you have an underlying condition for not wearing a mask up here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. She's very right and I do know the numbers and I knew them eight months ago when we had conversations. The actual numbers are, this is off CDC's website, 94% of reported COVID deaths. And we know how skewed those numbers are. 94% of them had 2.6 underlying health conditions. This could be stage four cancer, heart disease, whatever, okay? The remaining 6%, the majority of them were extremely elderly, okay? This is CDC's numbers. This isn't CNN's numbers or wherever people get their Facebook information from or whatever. These are actual numbers. And we're shutting down the whole country. This is insane. And I'm angry than she is, but I'm trying to really control myself because these are the facts. They're making these little kids wear diapers on their face. They're making all you wear diapers on your face, breathe in your own carbon monoxide. It's like little sheeple following around when somebody tells you this is what you gotta do. And I know you guys, the first time we had this conversation, you guys said, hey, we're going to just let people do whatever they want to do. If you feel better wearing a mask, by all means, wear one. If you feel like going into a crowded room or a restaurant is, might hinder your health, don't go. This is America. Let people do what they want to do. They'll take care of theirselves. They'll do what's right. The people will always end up doing what's right. They can thank for theirselves. Anyway, what they're doing to these kids is horrible. Not only are they keeping them out of school, but making them wear a diaper on their face. They can't do anything. They're for a while. They couldn't do sports. They fear, you know, they listen to us and they go, they're scared, scared to death of this thing. Anyway, the numbers, it's a nothing burger, okay? People get the flu. That's fine. 99 point, whatever percent of them get well. And we know why the ones that didn't, didn't get well. We know why they died. But anyway, I hope you'll really take those numbers into consideration because everything else is nothing burger. And you would resolve all the problems if you just left it up to the people. If you're scared, stay home. If you need to wear a mask, wear a mask. This is America. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Rachel Johnson. I'm from Salina. I'm a manager actually of a local bar here in Salina. And this is the first time that I've ever spoken this sort of situation. But I do feel very passionately about particular issues in this order. So first, I'd just like to start by saying that I offer my sincerest sympathies to anybody who is struggling with coronavirus right now. And actually, my own father has COVID right now and my brother as well. So I understand the severity of the situation completely. One of the things that we do know about people who are bartending, waitressing, being servers in restaurants, they are putting themselves at risk, at significant risk, at being in those situations. And, you know, they do that because this is how they provide for their families. I would say that there's a very small population of bars in Salina that would really feel an extreme damage done to them by closing at 11:00. Mine in particular is one of those bars. You know, I feel like there is maybe a perception that the bar community doesn't understand or doesn't feel the effects of how serious this is. And for us, you know, a large part of our business happens after 11 o'clock. So, you know, whatever the decisions are, we will do our absolute best to follow those recommendations. recommendations, requirements, and adhere to the policies that are set for us, just like we have been doing at this point in time. Sanitizing, keeping everything as clean as possible, social distancing, wearing masks, these are all things that we have been doing and will continue to do, to keep everyone as safe as possible and still be able to make the money that we need to take care of our children. So, beyond me, beyond my children, beyond my immediate family, I'm thinking of my staff and the children that they're supporting with their income. So, that is my, my particular issue with the closing at 11:00. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thank this gentleman over here for finally bringing out numbers, because if you really look at the numbers, you're gonna see what's actually happening. Several medical people got up here and talked about the increase in the cases. Well, wearing masks actually go along with the increase in those cases. There are very few people not wearing masks. And all of these people wearing masks, there's been an increase in cases. Now, to me, that's hard to understand.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to us as constituents this afternoon. I had a lot of information about the efficacy.
Please take your name.
I'm sorry, Chad Farber. I'm here in Salina, I'm a pastor here in town as well. And I sent an email to you regarding the efficacy of masks, and I understand that's not what we're discussing today. But it's very strange that the numbers continue to rise when the majority of the citizens of Salina are wearing masks everywhere they go. And some of the studies are now showing that because of that, we are trapping those germs, those virus germs into those masks, and we're breathing those back in, and thus, it is prolonging and continuing the rate of positive cases. The case counts are continuing to go up, there's no argument about that. The problem with that is, we are seeing more and more testing done. The young, or the gentleman was talking about numbers, 1.7 million tests were done, this was two weeks ago, and of those, of course, more tested positive than they had the week before, because fewer tests had been given. The problem with the testing is that there is a false positive rate that is taking place. Of the Corona Doom test that is taking place right now, experts are saying 1% to 5% false positive. I've seen reports as high as 12%. If we take 5% of 1.7 million tests, that's 85,000 false positives that take place every day. And as the testing increases, we're gonna see those numbers continue to rise and rise and rise. As far as the curfew in town, I think it's laughable. Like the lady said, it's not a magic time, 11 o'clock, everything dies. What is truly happening when we start putting restrictions is, we are hurting our local economy. And I know the argument is, well, we can, we can deal with that for the health or the greater good of everybody else. I saw a quote the other day that said, "A caged bird has a longer lifespan," but what kind of life is that? If we're gonna put restrictions on people and not allow them to make their own decisions, we, and I'm saying we, as, as those in the community here, are taking away their fundamental rights as Americans, like this gentleman said, we should trust everybody to make their own decision. If you want to wear a mask, please, by all means, wear a mask. And by the way, if you need to wear a mask, please, by all means, wear a mask. If you need to social distance, please do so. However, we should not have a blanket statement for everybody in the community to fall under what every one of us as commissioners, or you as commissioners, I'm sorry, would make a decision as. Finally, I do appreciate the exemption for religious institutions that I saw in the paperwork. I believe, I believe the answer to what is going on in our country right now is Jesus Christ. And I believe if more people would accept the idea of getting around God, we would get over a lot of the fear that is going on around us right now. And I believe a lot of this is fear-driven, and I would say, trust faith over fear. God can defeat coronavirus.
Jason, Chad.
I'm done. God can defeat coronavirus, we just need to stand over.
Does anyone else wish to speak before I bring it back to the commission?
Good to hear, folks. I stepped in at the last minute. You know, I've heard a lot of great.
Your name, please.
Delos Dulaery. I live here in Salina, worked here in Salina as well. All I would like to say, and I think everybody else has, has kind of touched on this at this point, you know, we've, we've taken precautions. I think, for the most part, most of us understand that we're doing our part in trying to be considerate, in trying to be conscientious, in wearing the mask, in social distancing, all of those things I understand to a certain extent. What I think people will not understand is taking away their ability to, to be together. This thing is gonna be with us for a while. By all accounts, this is going to be with us for possibly forever. And at some point in time, we need to be able to get back to, to the real world. We need to stop living in fear. I recognize it's a scary place out there. You know, before I say anything, I've, I've lost three family members to this thing, four, four family members. My wife had it, I had it. I must certainly have not been untouched by coronavirus, but I go about my day in the best way that I can, and try to be conscientious and courteous to the people around me. What I will say is that, at the point in time where we stop, where we start to limit what people can do with their time, with friends, so long as they are following the rules, and we make common, simple things like gathering, celebrating Thanksgiving, I know that that's not necessarily on, on the list right now, but when we start dictating what people can and cannot do within reason, you're going to start to see law-abiding, straight and narrow citizens become lawbreakers. I would rather not see that happen. I know that that, that sounds like an awful thing to say, but I do think that that is the line that we, that we are looking at crossing. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Angie Lastly, and I live here in Salina. I'm standing before you as the president and CEO of the Salina Family YMCA. And I just wanted to say thank you. I've had personal conversations with Jason Tiller and about the devastation that our community is going through, and some of the things that we're trying to fight. But I also want to bring up a few points that haven't already been mentioned, and that is just being very cautious about restricting people to come together in certain ways, with all the precautions in place. We're affecting not only physical health, but social and emotional health. We have quite a few of our seniors that normally come to the Y. It's their only social and emotional connection to people, and they're scared. And so, they're not coming out of their homes. And so, they're not getting their physical well-being met, they're not getting their emotional well-being met, they're not getting their mental well-being met. The other thing I want to share is, I'm a data person, and I don't trust the data, and it scares me that I don't know where to turn for correct data. But I can tell you a few things. I know that as of Wednesday's press release, we had 17 people that have died in Saline County due to COVID, and that is devastating. One of my, I have lost an uncle to COVID, but we've also had numerous people that have been positive and have survived with over 99% survival rate. What scares me is, from March 1st to November 15th, we had 81 forensic interviews done with children due to child abuse in our county. And a couple of other things that we're seeing with the child abuse concerns is that kids are not able to come to sporting activities, they're not spending time in schools, they're not going to daycares, they're not going to other places like classes at the community theater, where they're being seen by mandated reporters. So, a lot of child abuse is going unreported. And we are seeing significant issues with that, as well as increased homelessness because of jobs lost. When we closed the Y in March, I had to laugh, 175 people. That's devastating. And so, as a business leader, I appreciate the fact that we are trying to keep businesses open. I don't personally agree with the curfews. I think that if you're closing businesses earlier, you're trying to force people to come in and cause it to be busier at more times. But from a Y, from a YMCA standpoint, I encourage you to consider, I don't like the 50%, but that's better than being closed, as far as being able to be in different areas of our facility. But we've got to continue to find ways that people can be together in safe environments, and trust the businesses to do that. Enforcing the mask mandate is almost impossible, excuse me, almost impossible for my staff. Every day, they're coming to me, people being yelling at them. And so, I appreciate that this is not about just the masks, but we need to make sure that we're not keeping people away from each other. We are social people, and we need to continue that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else?
My name is Ossie Lu Malau. I was born and raised in Salina. I don't really have a whole lot to offer you. I like to think that I keep pretty up to date with what's going on in my community, but there are, there have been a plethora of people who have came up to this podium before me who were able to give you a lot more facts. But what I can tell you is my opinion. I do side with the medical professional, professional that came up here earlier. Everything that he said seems to be pretty right. I do agree with following forward, with putting in some more restrictions. I do. Saying that, my first job here in Salina was a local business. I worked as a barista at Asher Books and Coffee House, and if we undermine local businesses, you undermine Salina, and that's not good for us. So, really, we're looking at this situation where you're damned if you do, and you're damned if you don't. I know, it's kind of funny, but it's so hard, it's really hard. You know, saying that, we have had 17 people in Salina die due to COVID, and regardless of whether or not that's due to pre-existing conditions, that's still 17 too many, who bit the bullet a little too early, for no reason, for no reason. Also, looking at the economic standpoint of that, looking up Ryan Mortuary, the basic service cost is about $21.50. So, times out by 17 people, you have over $36,000 already taken because of having to deal with funerals. As opposed with the 99% survival rate, that, I understand, you know, you, you catch it, and then you can get past it, you can get the antibiotics, but it still undermines the deaths that we've seen thus far. You know, I would be offended if I had lost a, you know, a family member, and somebody came to me and said, "It's still 99%." My mother's 62 years, two years old, and she's diabetic, and she caught it, I just don't know what I would do. I have no idea. I also side with the Salina Community Theater, with what they had said, requesting that they get their capacity bumped up to 33%. If they can do it, I don't see why not, it makes sense. So, if we should make any amendment, I would like to just push and advocate for that part, but also, just for safety restrictions in Salina, I'm willing to live with that. I am. And that's my opinion. Thank you for hearing me out, friends.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission, we'll, we'll do some comments. Do you have something, Phil?
Mr. Chair, I have two emails that Commissioner Shadwick handed to me before he had to leave, and we don't normally read email comments into the record. I did not know how you wanted me to handle them. If you want me to read them, I can, I can pass them around to commissioners to, to look at, or however you'd like to deal with it.
Well, if we, if we start doing that, I mean, I've got a stack of emails here that we would need to read. I think, I think at this time that we're, we're not gonna read them. I, I mean, I have no idea what those say. I've got another letter here from students out at K-State, and I appreciate it, and I've read them and looked closely, so. I, I want you to know, in Mr. Spicer's case and Ms. Landis, that they're kind of a, it's the nature of your business, you know, that, that requires the percentages to change. That, that's my opinion, I don't know if that's correct or not. Keep in mind that this, this health order, as it's written, can change, we can change it next week, if something doesn't seem to be right. But it is, as it's written, it's only got six weeks. I think it's about six weeks, isn't that a correct, pretty close to it? So, it's not gonna, we can, we can adapt, we can amend, we can cancel it, we can carry it on. That's, that's how long it's supposed to go for, so. I, I will say that, and several of you have touched on it, we need to police ourselves. You know, I mean, that's a big deal, we need to police ourselves. With that, I will bring it back to the commission and ask for comments. I'll, I'll start again with Commissioner White.
First ones, in regards to the curfew, the magic hour. I'm having a difficult time with the 11 o'clock, and under the restrictions you mentioned earlier, Phil, funeral homes should have been listed in here, you thought?
We received a comment from a funeral director, and I understand the point that if religious institutions are exempted, you could have a funeral at a church that would be exempted, but if you had the same service at a funeral home, it wouldn't be. And so, just in the interest of fairness, that makes sense to me, but that was my only.
Well, and the spread is from weddings and funerals, so, okay. That's the only questions I have at this time.
Well, I, I think we should, we'd stop for a second then. I mean, if you feel that 11 o'clock is unfair for a bar, I mean, and this is, this is, I'm getting ahead of ourselves a little bit in that, assuming that we would just go along with the health order. Is that something that you would change?
Yes.
To what?
I don't know what the magic hour is, midnight?
Okay, no, there was, we're, public portion is closed. Commissioner Weiss, in terms of his question there, do you have a comment, have a thought on the hour?
Well, I had a doubt in my notes to ask Jason, and I think Phil gave us a, a little bit of it, it was just a number that, that we balanced out that had been happening around the state and such. Jason, do you have any more input or any other information on the 11 o'clock curfew?
No, sir, I think, I'm not quite sure how other jurisdictions have decided a time. I think some of them just pick the time. There hasn't been any kind of rhyme or reason that's been discussed about whether they decided to do 11 o'clock versus 12 o'clock, or vice versa.
Okay. And to follow up on that, Jason, while you're, while I got your ear, there was a question brought up about the qualifications of our health director, and whether the KDHE had weighed in on any of this information.
Well, Jim, we, we need to act on what we're talking about here, on the, on the 10 o'clock hour, whatever, and then we can go back to that. So, Commissioner Sparks, do you have?
I, I just, this whole bar thing has got me, is, I, 'cause I'm, I'm looking at it at the same time, it's like, if, 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 if a bar is doing everything in its jurisdiction, their helpers are wearing face masks, they're doing the cleaning, and they have had nothing, that is completely different from another establishment that doesn't enforce any of that, that doesn't have any of that going. I feel, why, why can, how can we just put, and I'm just with this, this is me thinking, how can we put one, one jurisdiction over all bars? And, and, and if this bar is, is, is doing everything, and it's powered to make everything right, why, why can't we sit back and say, okay, hey, the bars were really gonna say this is gonna be 1 o'clock? But, you know, if somebody comes in there, and what gets me on this, and, oh, you want to stay with this 11 o'clock thing, I just say, let's make it, I just can't see this 11 o'clock thing being a magic number at all. I don't know.
I'll ask you the same question I asked Commissioner White.
Okay, 1 o'clock, 1 o'clock.
I, I would disagree with the 1 o'clock. I would, I would make the compromise to, to go with the, with the midnight, if that's what it looks like we can do, but, I mean, are I, Commissioner Weiss?
I think staff has done everything they can to try to keep business viable and still protect the public. The 11 o'clock. The 11 o'clock, I don't have a big issue with it, but if 12 o'clock gets it passed, then I'll compromise at 12.
That brings it back to me then, doesn't it? Because in, to compromise, I'll go with the 12 o'clock. So we'll change that to 12 o'clock. That would be, if this does indeed go down, we would like to change that to 12 o'clock. That's a consensus of three out of the four commissioners. So now, Mr. Weiss, Commissioner Weiss, you go ahead with your questions to Jason.
Yeah, I have a couple of them. The drafting of this health order, I assume, Jason, that you took into account KDHE and what other entities had input? Did medical personnel within the county assist in this, or who all was involved in the drafting of this health order?
Well, as far as KDHE, they won't normally weigh in on health orders. They won't take a legal stance on any of this for counties. As far as the other content of the health order, as far as I know, it was mostly Phil and myself and county attorney, the county representation, Mike Montoya, that also was part of it, along with looking at some of the other health orders related to mass gatherings that have been passed in different county jurisdictions as applied.
Okay. Does KDHE advise recommendations? Or I know CDC does, correct?
In regard to mass gatherings?
Best practices.
Yeah, they will, they will print out recommendations on best practices. But KDHE, to the best of my knowledge, has not put out any kind of recommendation on what the ideal number is for a mass gathering, other than to say that mass gatherings, I believe, shouldn't occur, especially with members outside of your household.
So their recommendation is quite a bit stricter than what this reads. And also to follow up, a lot of the concern is, comes from the school district. They're wanting hard to keep the schools open, and I agree that the well-being of the children, they need to interact. They need to be in that public setting. They need to be in the classroom. And that is something this health order is trying to keep going. And second, people were talking about the positive testing and the large numbers and all that. I don't get into the testings and how many were positive or negative and all that. I look at the daily numbers at the hospital and how that's grown and how it has really, really climbed here in just the last two weeks. So I agree. Testing, you can skew those numbers however you want, but you can't skew the number of people in the hospital on ventilators or in the ICU.
Okay. Commissioner Sparks?
I just, another, do we have a certain issue that you want to cover right now, or can we just discuss?
You've got the floor. You can touch on anything you want.
I just want to stop and think about the issues and about how back in March and April when this all started and how businesses, the Dillons, the Menards, the Lowes, everybody was out there, their parking lots were just fizzier than hell. And we sat there, you know, and there was people running around with masks on, and some people did not, even though it said mask required, you know, they were still at that time. The other thing that was pretty interesting at that time, you had people out there cleaning, 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 everything. Every basket, everything was wiped down, and you just don't see the cleanliness of things in the last few months that you did. It kind of dropped off pretty quickly. I think that, yeah, maybe they did, but nothing like it was there for a while. You couldn't grab anything that didn't have a person sitting there pushing you the cart that just didn't get cleaned. That has kind of went by the byway, and we still have the same situation where this disease can be transferred, just not by particles. It could be on a product for something for hours and hours. So to me, it's another one of those things where all, we all have that responsibility to still look out for ourselves, our protection of where we go, what we do. And if that still is the concern in us, I'm a grown man, but just in the last two weeks, I had a great niece that got requested to stay away from school because the person at her cubicle, even though they got the four plexiglasses in between them, one of the children at that four plex had COVID. So she has to stay home for 14 days, and being a little junior high cheerleader, she is pissed, you know? And so it's another one of those things where it's that there. And then another gentleman, a kid, a freshman in high school had to stay home because of a similar situation. And you really sit back and think, okay, where does this really go? And I had asked the kind of, my whole thought was, is a percentage. Where do we know, if we've been chasing this for so long now and we have followed, what's the percentage rates of where are these people coming from? And it's not available. So it's, I would still sit here and look at what we've been, where we've been, and to sit back and say, okay, what are we going to change, really? Because it's a, we're sitting here, 25% of this are 15 individuals. I just, I just can't even imagine that we're going to put a number to something here like this and say, sit back and say, everything is 50% of the fire code. We have a certain number here, and it's like, if we're going to resolve something, let's just go with 50% of the fire code and say, that's it. That's the magic number. But there's pluses and minuses about everything that's here. And I don't think, like we've, our administrator, Mr. Phil, said earlier, that this is not the fix-all to everything, and we can always change it and we need to edit it. And it's like, quite, and it's like me. I think that we need to possibly, my preference would be to sit back and say, not to do anything today, and look at it and say, okay, Tuesday, along with everything else, can we vote on something Tuesday? I mean, I know that we're wanting to get something done. I know that. But that's my opinion, and I just, I'll go with it. Thank you for my time.
You know, when I ran for county office four years ago, I never in my wildest dreams imagined that I would be voting on whether someone potentially might live or might die, go broke, need to go on food stamps or welfare. I never dreamed I would be making those decisions. I thought I was elected to check for chuckles out on the county roads, you know? That's the gist of what they think county commissioners do. But I never in my wildest dreams thought we would be in this position. And with that having been said, I would like to make a recommendation that if this goes through, or if we do nothing, that we amend Section 2, Number 6, and that is the mortuary thing that Phil talked about, because I'm sure everyone in this room has been to a lot of funerals at mortuaries, and they always have a religious sermon or something within that service that would constitute, you know, religion. So I think we should make a G and make it, the mortuaries an exception also. And I will ask other commissioners if they feel that way or not. And Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss?
I'm good with that.
And Commissioner Sparks?
Yes.
So four of us, we would amend that portion of it.
And the 12 o'clock curfew?
Beg your pardon?
The 12 o'clock curfew. The 12 o'clock curfew?
Oh, I assumed that we did that, yeah. I think Phil, I saw Phil write that down.
Very good.
Are you clear on that one?
At the end of your discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion, but I'm writing it down so I can, yeah.
Mr. Chair, one other item, and I know that the community theater brought up that their breakpoint is 33% versus the 25. It seems like any auditorium or any exhibition hall that might have that same threshold. So I would, I would like to see the 25 go to 33.
I'll ask the others. I'm, I'm not for that, but simply because if we go through every single one of these and pick out a different, a little bit different number, but, I mean, if three of you want that, then that's fine, too. I think Mr. Spicer indicated 33% would be his break-even point. And, you know, if that's the reason we're changing it, then there would be, we would probably get a flood of people changing the percentages so that they could break even, if that's the case. But if that's what you're proposing, and I'll ask the other commissioners.
No.
And I'm no, too, so that's, that makes it a square deal there. All right, Phil, is there anything else that we need to cover here? As far as, before we make a decision, and I think...
No, I mean, it's up to the commission. If there are other things that you see that you want changed, that would be, you know, this would be the time for discussion of those. If there's no other proposals, then I think I can read back that...
Okay. I will make another comment. I think this mandate, or of whatever, it's a health order, has come down. I think it's very generous as far as restrictions go. Several of you have alluded to, you can kind of do what you want. If you don't want to go in that place, you don't want to go into it. But just the same, there's got to be, I agree with Commissioner Weiss on the hospitals. I mean, we've just got to stop something. This is a compromise. Everybody's going to stay open, and you're going to have to adapt, if you're a business owner, for this six-week period, and it could be shorter. If Roger has indicated, he wants to look at some things again as early as next week. Well, that could happen. It could get changed. But for right now, my vote is going to be that we take no action and just let the health order stand.
Mr. Chair, we need to vote on this health order.
I don't think...
Well, I heard a consensus of the commission to make some changes. I would like you to vote on those changes, so we have that in the record. Because if you take literally no action, this would go into effect with the numbers that are in it, and I think you all want some changes, was my understanding.
And...
So I would ask for a motion and a second to make these changes that I've noted, and I can read them back if you'd like.
What were the, three changes?
Two. I have two.
Two.
To amend Section 2, Subsection 2, last sentence, to change 11:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight, and to amend Section 2, Subsection 6, to add a G related to funeral homes.
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion?
Yes.
I would move we adopt in entirety the proposed health order with the proposed changes.
I second the motion.
Is that where we needed to go with that motion, Phil, or was it just to make those two changes to the health order?
I think that's a perfectly acceptable motion, Counselor. Yeah.
Okay. And it has been moved and seconded that we adapt, adopt, excuse me, today's health order with the changes, the two changes that were made regarding funeral homes and closing time of bars and restaurants. Is there any further discussion? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. The motion carries four to zero. I thank everyone for attending. Your comments are very much appreciated, and I'm guessing we might see somebody back here in a few weeks. I hope it's in a positive light, so thank you for attending. I would take a motion for adjournment.
Submove.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you for attending. You're welcome.